Welcome, candidates, those here in the audience and those watching on the livestream. As a courtesy to all present, please silence your cellphones now. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County is pleased to be cosponsoring this forum with The Solon Economist and the Solon Public Library, thanks to Michael Clark for assistance in preparing for this evening. This is the Solon City Council Candidates Forum. All candidates have been invited to participate in this forum. I am Roxanne Hughes, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be moderator for this evening's forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside of this room following the forum, and no buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed inside of this room. We ask that no questions or outbursts come directly from the audience. The League supports the free and open exchange of ideas through civil discourse. Please hold any applause until the end of the forum. The League does not take positions after considerable study—excuse me—the League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Join us. We can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. League brochures are available at our welcome table near the entrance, or find us at www.lwvjc.org. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with one from the League, followed by one submitted on cards by you in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write questions on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum and bring them to me to read to you. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum here or at another time. Each question will be asked of all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. Near the end of the scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening, and League member Barbara Hemlock will serve as timekeeper and use cards to alert candidates when time is about up and when it is up. There are five candidates for the four-year term city council seats. Three will be elected in the November 4 election. The five candidates for these seats are, left to right from your point of view, Cole Gabriel, Tim Gordon, Matt Mackey, Greg Morris, Lauren Whitehead. Audience members, please write your questions on the cards provided and pass them to League members who will advance them to the moderator. Let's get started with opening statements. Please speak loudly so audience members can hear you. Candidates, let's begin with your two-minute opening statement, starting with Mr. Gabriel. Your opening statement.
My name is Cole Gabriel, and I've had the pleasure of serving as a Solon City Councilor for the last four years. I would like to take a moment to thank the Solon Library, The Economist, and the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together. Important milestones that have been achieved over the last four years are the opening of the fire station, the opening of the sheriff's substation, five-year contract with the—five-year contract with the sheriff department providing safety for our local residents, the beating of the water treatment plant, getting the land and preparing financing for that. I've served as the public city liaison to the public library for the last four years, and you can't get me to sing their praises enough. I also serve on the finance committee, supporting legacy businesses like the Solon Hardware Store. After storms, I helped tear that apart, supporting new businesses within the town like the Bluebird Cafe. I also serve on the building and growth committee, where we've been planning the next stage of downtown expansion, hoping to bring more business and more foot traffic to downtown to help maintain that growth that we've been seeing. A little bit about myself: I have been a 10-year resident of Solon. I've worked nearly 10 years at the University of Iowa as an accountant. I've served 17 years in the Iowa-era National Guard and continue to proudly serve our state and country. Solon was a place that me and my wife, when we were looking for a place to put down roots, ended up being the dream that everyone promised: a tight-knit community where people care about each other, where there are quality schools, that place that's growing but still has that sense of small-town charm, and I'm determined to make sure that Solon continues to be a place that prospers. If reelected, what would be my priorities for the next four years? I would like the establishment of a senior liaison between senior groups within Solon so that we can better coordinate and cooperate, part-time benefits for Solon City employees, completion of the water treatment plant, and the building of a new community center, and shepherding growth in the future in a strategic way so that we can continue to grow in a healthy manner.
Mr. Gordon, your opening statement.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Tim Gordon, and I'm here tonight as a candidate for city council. I decided to throw my hat in the ring because, honestly, I love this town, and I believe we can grow without losing what makes us special. I've lived here 24 years, raised a family, own a business. I'm not a politician; I'm a neighbor who listens. I've served on the Solon Plant and Zoning Commission. I was president of the Solon Centennial Lions Club, Solon Beef Days Committee, as well as many other charity and volunteer endeavors. Like many of you, I chose to make Solon my home because it's a place where people still wave to each other. It's a place where neighbors still look out for each other. And most of all, it's a community that truly means something. Everybody supports one another, and I just love that more than anything. Being here for a couple decades, I've seen how growth brings opportunity as well as challenge. New families, new businesses, new energy—they're all great things, but only if we manage them with care, foresight, and respect for the people who are already here. That's the biggest thing. That means making smart decisions about development, keeping our infrastructure strong, and ensuring our local government stays transparent and accountable for the decisions that we make. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey, your opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Matt Mackey, candidate for Solon City Council. I would also like to echo what Mr. Gabriel said. I'd like to thank the library for hosting tonight in partnership with Women's League of Voters. I haven't held a spot-on zoning commission or anything much for the city. This is my first endeavor in something like this. So I'm going to give you a little background on myself. I'm out of high school. I enlisted in the U.S. Army. I fought in Iraq and Afghanistan. I thought that was something I was going to make a career out of, until I was wounded a couple times. The second time was going to end my service. I returned home, and I've been a police officer for the past 13 years. That's where I've gained my experience with small-town government and city councils. I would regularly attend the council meetings. I'd engage with the members, the mayor. I had, more importantly, probably a lot of access to the public, addressing their concerns concerning organs and things that were going on. So I was in a unique position to hear everybody's voice. Currently, I move back that down to a part-time position, and I am a lead investigator for TransAmerica for their legal and compliance department. That position has given me experience on a national level to equal-opportunity investigations, multi-state civil procedure, risk analysis, federal and state regulatory requirements, and I serve as an administrator and liaison to state regulatory agencies. I've lived here with my wife and kids for the past decade. We've been very active at events and volunteerism for organizations within the community. Solon's a great place to live and grow a family, and we'd love to call it home. Undoubtedly, nobody's going to make—that's running—is going to make everybody 100% happy all the time. It'd be unfair of me to say that to you. So what I can promise you is I'm always going to approach issues with an impartial and unbiased methodology, with reasonability, respect, self-effacement, and always forward in the best interests of Solon. I'd like to close this with a statement to call action to the public. Please talk to us, educate yourselves, most importantly, vote. Thank you.
Mr. Morris, your opening statement.
Thank you. I too would like to thank The Economist, the library, and the League of Women Voters for hosting this. It's nice to see everybody here with keen interest in what's going on in Solon. My name is Greg Morris. I've been in Solon most of my life, 54 of my years I've been here. A longtime member of the fire department, 35-plus years. I serve currently as the alternate to the Johnson County Emergency Management Commission on behalf of the city. I'm on the Board of Adjustment. I recently started with the Solon Housing Corporation, looking at some senior housing stuff. So all that allows me to stay young and meet with different groups. In the past, I was a part of the Beef Days Committee. I also was involved with the Spartan Stadium Project with the school. One of the things I've learned over time with all these different groups is everybody's a different demographic, and it's fun to listen to people talk about what's important to them. And that part, I think, caught me. And people have asked me, "Why are you running now?" I had an opportunity 18 months ago to retire from my full-time job, so I have time now. I couldn't run before because my job would not allow me to make the meetings, and I think that's important, too. As I think about what's going on in Solon right now, and maybe six months ago, and hopefully in the future, the council needs to do a probably better job of communicating with people. And with that being said, all of us have to understand that those meetings are open for anybody to attend to ask about what's going on, so there are no surprises. As I look at what I would like to see the council and the city do in the future, just think about what's good for today and maybe even more for tomorrow, knowing that not everybody is going to be made happy. But if we give good answers, logical answers, ones that make sense, at the end of the day, we all can get along and things will be okay. Thank you.
Ms. Whitehead, your opening statement.
Excuse me. Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to everybody in this room for being here. This is an amazing turnout, and I appreciate you investing your time and energy into our city's future. And I also want to say hi to my mom and dad, who are watching from Kansas City. My name is Lauren Whitehead, and I'm here tonight to make the case for a third term as your city councilor. I live just around the corner on Short Street, and I've raised my two teenage daughters here. They've only ever called Solon home. By day, I'm a high school teacher. I help young people plan for life after high school through college and career readiness. Over the past eight years on council, I've had the honor of helping steer Solon through major changes: serving as mayor pro tem, advocating for our community center and recreation department, and standing up for Solon's right to guide growth outside city limits. In every role, I've worked hard to be informed, open-minded, and willing to ask hard questions. I don't rubber-stamp decisions. You may not always agree with me, but you will know the why behind my decision-making. I take accessibility very seriously. I respond to every resident who reaches out, and I believe transparency builds trust. Many of you already know I am more than eager to talk about city business. So tonight, my goal is simple: to answer your questions honestly, in plain language, and with respect for all perspectives. I want you to know that I'm not just experienced, but that I'm passionate about serving you and guiding Solon through this exciting and challenging period of rapid change. I hope to earn your trust, your confidence, and your vote for another term on city council. Thank you.
The first question is from League of Women Voters. Water quality is an important issue in all Johnson County communities. The Solurian aquifer is the primary source of groundwater for Solon and its surrounding communities. As both climate and societal habits continue to shift, the recent study shows that water levels of the Solurian aquifer are projected to decrease. Judith Kaufman-Thomas of the U.S. Geological Survey presented a report showing that, quote, "projected drawdowns of 13 to 43 feet could occur in high-use zones such as Solon and Iowa City by 2045 if current trends continue." What strategies should the Solon City Council consider to combat the predicted drawdown? We'll start with you, Cole Gabriel.
Water quality and use of water infrastructure are vital for Solon's future. It's one of the reasons that we're most invested in the water treatment plant, but as every study that has come out has said, increased use and increased population is going to put increased pressure on limited resources. I think Solon and the surrounding communities, and especially Johnson County, needs to be aware of, though we need to expand to make things more accessible and affordable as far as housing goes countywide, we also need to be very conscious about how much pressure that puts on the aquifer. If things run too low too quickly and no one has water, it doesn't matter if something was affordable when you built it, if you can't have any water to drink from it 20 years from now. So continued coordination and cooperation, whether that means installing water-efficient systems, going town by town and examining the infrastructure to plug any leaks as soon as possible, making the community aware and putting out public information as often as possible, just so they're aware of how water usage impacts the wider picture. Items like that is how I would start that.
Tim Gordon.
My feelings on that probably revolve more around density and education. I mean, I understand what the use of water density in a town like this has been a big factor. That's why we don't have the North Liberty 12-plexes and stuff like that. By education, I guess, letting people know how this will impact us, but I guess the way that that was read for me—I mean, it's—I need more layman's terms. I need something a little more simple that the public can understand. So I think that the idea of educating the public, limiting the use, you know, just letting them know that there could be a problem down the road may change things. So that's all I have.
Matt Mackey.
Well, I think that we need to listen to our experts, whether that be through the EPA, the DNR, U.S. Geological Service. If they're telling us that this is going to be a problem, we need to start educating and preparing now for it, so that way we don't get to a crisis point and don't have the infrastructure to support it as the town grows. The balancing act of doing that—I don't have the education or the background in aquifers or that scientific knowledge to tell you how we would solve that problem, but I do think we need to approach it with an open mind, listen to our experts, and make good decisions when we're planning around our infrastructure. That's all I have.
Greg Morris.
Water's been a big issue around here for a long time, and it's something that is constantly on everybody's mind. I think the most important thing, as I look at the question that was asked and maybe what is going on, is I think the city needs to do a good job on a yearly basis to inform us what's going on. Where are we at? How important is the aquifer? Where's it at as far as numbers go? We can all talk about this is good and that's bad, and that's fair. That really is fair. But I think it's important that, whether it's the DNR, the EPA, whoever it is, tell us where we are at on a yearly basis, so we don't go into crisis mode all of a sudden. So if we need to plan accordingly for the next 18 months or 24 months or whatever it is, we can do that. We just—as a council, let's be smart about it on a yearly basis and get great updates as we need. Thank you.
Lauren Whitehead.
Hi, everybody. Okay, thank you so much. This is one of my favorite topics, so I'll try to keep it short. Water quality and quantity are maybe the most pressing issue in Solon, in our region, in our state, maybe our country. So we are not alone, and I feel we shouldn't be handling this all alone. What I've been doing for my part is talking with literally everybody that will listen to me in Johnson County, at the higher state level. I've been talking to candidates for senatorial office, for other—anybody who wants to represent Solon, I'm telling them, it's not fair. We're burdening ourselves with a huge cost that's going to serve regional purposes, and that's not fair. So I'm really strongly thinking that our council not just needs to inform y'all, but we need to be more proactively advocating for Solon at higher levels to say, "Hey, we need support. We need help." And that is definitely something I plan to focus doing, is being a stronger advocate at higher levels for Solon, especially around the issue of water.
Solon has seen rapid growth in recent years, but housing prices and rents have risen faster than many residents can afford. How do you plan to ensure that Solon remains a welcoming community for residents of all income levels, including teachers, servants' workers, and seniors on fixed incomes, while maintaining the city's small-town character? Tim Gordon.
The housing crisis is obviously nationwide. That's not just with Solon, but it is very difficult with interest rates, prices, to make it affordable. One thing—you know, owning a lumber business, I know all about lumber prices and stuff, so it's very difficult to make something just—let's just make it $100,000 less for a house. It's really not something we can do easily. However, land prices—like, it's—the current prices we have, the current state law with accessory dwelling units might be something to look at for affordable housing that really hasn't even been touched. I mean, I was kind of surprised by that since it was done in July. But yeah, I think it's just something—it's something that needs to be looked at. I don't know the actual answer of how, but it's possible with the right people.
Matt Mackey.
I would agree with Tim. We need to look into state programming for that. In terms of construction materials, he knows more than I do. He owns a lumber company. But I mean, there's things—we certain things we cannot control as a city council. Some of that's going to be market volatility. Some of it's going to be assessments. You know, we all pay property taxes, right? And you get that nice letter from the assessor's office saying, "Your house just went up 40 grand." We don't have control over that. The question I have is, is when you start talking HUD and affordable housing, the government sets that rate. So if they were to set it, let's say, at $140,000 and call that an affordable single-family structure, how do you purchase the lot for that? You know, and lot prices are 70, 90,000, depending on what you got. What do you build with that, and what does that look like? I don't have an answer for this question to give you directly today, but it is something that we need to be looking at and trying to do without another expansion area, such as as big as like Trail Ridge or something like that, to keep Solon small-town feel. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
The question to me is really interesting, because I think the elephant in the room is the word "affordable." I think we can look at each of us, and what does "affordable" mean? We all would like to provide places for anybody who wants to move to Solon to live, but it's not the city's business to get into building, at least the city of Solon right now. As other candidates have mentioned, the cost of land, the cost of materials, the labor costs—it is an issue. Being part of the Solon Community Housing Corporation right now, we're trying to figure out what is good attainable housing for seniors, and it's not easy, and it hasn't been easy, and the costs have come back to us, and it's staggering. I'm not sure there's a good answer. I believe that. I think the other part is with what's going on in Washington right now, that government funding is going to be really interesting moving forward. That's probably where we would all look to first, to help each other out if it's needed, but we're not sure what's going on there. The state of Iowa, it depends who you listen to, whether they have money or not, what they're going to support or not support. But again, I'll go back to this. I think if—stop. I'll stop. Thank you. I wasn't looking at her.
Lauren Whitehead.
Thank you. So this summer, I participated in a number of housing study meetings that the county is putting on, the focus on non-metro Johnson County, so not Iowa City or Corleville or North Liberty, us, right? And I found out that someone earning the median income, like right in the middle in Johnson County, can barely afford the middle-priced home, a median-priced home. So this tells us that our market isn't meeting our needs. We need options for everyday workers, for families, for seniors. I'm really interested in exploring options like accessory dwelling units, smaller footprints homes. I'm not talking about deli-box apartment buildings. I'm talking about cottages, not condos, right? Solutions that make homeownership attainable. That could mean infill development. It's probably going to mean partnerships, leveraging county and state programming, and I'd like to also see options for rentals for people preparing for homeownership. The multigenerational feel of Solon is part of what makes it special. To preserve that, we need housing that allows young families, families to put down roots, and seniors to age in place. Thank you.
Cole Gabriel.
As far as items that would be under the influence of the Solon City Council, we don't control what higher levels of government do, but I don't think the city is ready to be a developer. But something that we do have some influence over is if a developer approaches us and they have a design. We can give feedback to them and say, "We believe this community needs more senior housing." I would love to see an additional 55-plus senior housing community in Solon. I think widely, the residents would be receptive to that. I don't think building at the rate of North Liberty is healthy or appropriate, but if there are smaller developments that are happening, throwing in an occasional zero lot is not the worst thing in the world. Having an occasional two-plex or three-plex is not bad. That is how I got my start in Solon, how a lot of people get their children living in Solon. So just that flexibility, talking to developers as you go, is one of the few things that the Solon City Council does have some direct influence over, and that's how I would approach it.
Will you support our efforts to increase water monitoring? Efforts by Keith Schilling, state geologist in Johnson County. We have one well in Kent Park and have done no new monitoring since the 1970s and early 80s. We've asked him to speak in Solon about his water protection efforts. We want to set up a county committee and area government water user and to meet quarterly and discuss water issues. So will you support that? Matt Mackey.
I think the bigger question I have is, is why hasn't it been monitored since then? Again, I'm going to defer to, we need to be listening to the experts concerning our water treatment plan and the demands of the city. My understanding is, is that right now, existing facilities can accommodate up to another 4,000 before we would have to drill another well. Given the status of that well is still operational, and at least I haven't heard any concerns with city water being an issue in town or whoever's connected to it, you just have to understand that any time you want to go drill another well, there is another contamination risk. So again, that's a study that I would support absolutely, but I would be really curious as to find out why it hasn't already been done, and yeah, thank you.
Greg Morris.
I think a couple things on that. It's interesting to me that Kent Park came up, because I'm not sure how that pertains to what we're doing here, and only because I'm not that familiar with the entire study. And with that being said, it still comes back to what we're doing here and being smart about that, and we need to invite him in to help educate us in what's going on in Solon. I am for that. I am in agreement with listening to what he has to say, but it sounds like he's not interested in us, at least right now.
Lauren Whitehead.
I'm always in favor of intergovernmental cooperation, so I'm already talking to other leaders in the county about how we are dealing with this aquifer drawdown and with water quality issues. I was just talking to the mayor of Corleville, and they are drilling a new well into the Solurian aquifer, the same one we used. So we all need to be working together. So yeah, I would be in favor of some kind of group that—where we are communicating with each other and not operating in isolation from each other. And I'm always in favor of bringing in information and sharing it with the community, so yes, all in favor of those things.
Cole Gabriel.
Ditto to Lauren. I believe it's incredibly vital, and there's evidence of immediately outside the city. Gallery Acres, McBride Point, the reasons they turned to us is because their wells were poisoned with arsenic. their wells were poisoned with arsenic. And I see that as a growing issue within the surrounding communities, not a decreasing one. So, anything that would bring additional information to the cities, the governments, and most importantly, the residents, so that we can make informed decisions going forward, would be welcome, without hesitation.
Cole Gabriel. Excuse me, Tim Gordon.
I'm going to go with Cole and just say ditto to everybody. This one is one of those things that I would be totally in full support. Hopefully, we could find the right people to form a committee that would represent Solon very well, whether it be council, public. That has to be something that has to be talked about. But, yeah, I'd be fully on board to see why this hasn't been explored before and how we can go further in the future.
Lack of transparency has been a common complaint about the city council, including the fact that none of the material the council sees in making its decisions is available to the public at the meeting or online. What do you feel can be done to make the work of the city council more transparent? Would you support sharing non-confidential material being placed online at least 24 hours before the meeting? Greg Morris.
That is a very open-ended question. I think the city right now does a pretty good job of putting the agenda out there. They have to, that's state law, I believe. But as far as the rest of the stuff, what it really comes down to is where do you start and stop? And it can be very lengthy, it can be very long, and I understand the question about transparency. So, when something comes up in a meeting, it's not a surprise to us as taxpayers that we read in the paper. That part I understand. I think if it's an important agenda item, dealing with dollars and cents, our dollars and cents, it could be expanded upon. So, if you're looking at it on a Tuesday night and there's something catches your eye, you can say, you know what, I'm going to go Wednesday night so I understand what's going on. As I've, since I announced my candidacy, that's the one thing people have talked about. Thank you.
Lauren Whitehead.
First, I'd like to say that transparency and accessibility were a priority for me when I was elected initially eight years ago, and I think we've actually come a long way. We have a website overhaul, our agendas, our minutes, our videos that we're streaming now. So, we are more available. However, I do believe the agenda and resolution or ordinance language especially should be available in advance for people to review for passing an ordinance. You should know what it is. And that's totally doable. For my part, I'm happy to and will continue to answer any questions that anybody has and share my information so everybody feels confident about what's going on and understands the reasoning behind my decisions.
Cole Gabriel.
Yes, this is, especially with the last year, this issue has popped up quite a bit in talking with members of the community. It's a, I think, a fair point and a fair criticism with the current city council. I believe we should convert, as many of the small communities, as well as the Johnson, as well as the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, they all put out their full agenda at least 24 hours beforehand. I think if there's any resolution language or any changes to ordinances, those should be fully visible in public so they can be able to read them. The only part where I might have a little bit of hesitation is that there's confidential matters. That I would ask you, you approach the city council, and we can discuss the issue there. But as far as any routine resolution language or ordinance language, I think that should be fully visible and available to the public. And if the other members agree, that's the majority, and we're good to go.
Tim Gordon.
Yes, the whole transparency thing is a huge topic that I have been asked about a lot with this. I do believe the city council has done a great job as far as putting it out there. The agenda can be very vague, and I think that's a problem a lot of people have, is when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of spending, you've got one sentence to look at. And then, you know, of course, you've got the discussion through the panel, but it's something that if one little click, I guess you can, the easiest thing with transparency is to contact your council members. I mean, it's on the webs, you know, their email address and phone numbers on the site. So, that's one thing that I would be very open to entertaining anybody that had any question for me. If I could answer it from a non-confidential standpoint, I would answer it with every bit of detail I could.
Matt Mackey.
First, on the last question, I had Randall Park, not Kent Park, in my head, so none of that made sense. But, so, ask me after the meeting. Secondly, as far as transparency goes, if it's not a violation of some sort of privacy law, confidential nature, employee issue, or something that needs to be closed session, as Greg eloquently put it, it is our tax dollars. And we have a right to know how our tax dollars are spent. And if it is not going to be an interference to a meeting or some haphazard information that is going to mess something up, per se, with a transaction, then I say absolutely yes. Everybody should have visibility into what's going on and how our money's being spent. Thank you.
What do you consider Solon's biggest win and miss in the past five years? Lauren Whitehead.
Okay, that's a hard question. Our biggest win, I mean, I think here, the same thing for both. Our biggest win and our biggest miss has been the community center. I'm so grateful that we established it. It was my favorite part of starting office. I got to be part of that project launch. And we took a great building and turned it into something we definitely need, and it has served its purpose, and it's going away. I think we could have anticipated this better. The building is disintegrating, right? So, we know that. What I want us to do is to proactively start ASAP figuring out solutions to losing that center and making plans to construct a new community center that's going to meet the needs of all of our residents, so it's kind of like Solon's living room, right? Financially, responsibly. That's going to be a big challenge. So, a win, we need it, we got it. A miss, we could have planned it maybe a little bit better, but we can fix that problem, no problem.
Cole Gabriel.
I think the biggest win was the near simultaneous opening of the new fire station and the opening of the substation. I think those were two big notable achievements that improved public safety within Solon and brought county police, county sheriffs within the locality, and that program is going to continue with the five-year contract that we signed with the sheriff's office. I think the biggest miss does go to the community center. While the school has been an excellent partner, we knew this issue was coming, and greater speed and urgency in getting a new community center built was probably our biggest miss, though we are accelerating our plans to get that going.
Tim Gordon.
I will echo Cole in saying that the win would be the fire department. However, the substation, I'm kind of hit or miss on. I would certainly probably much rather have an ambulance sitting there than a Johnson County Sheriff's Office. With Solon's growth, I think it's very important that we look at all emergency management. Although the fire department does a great job, but that's one thing that I just believe would really benefit the community.
Matt Mackey.
This is a tough one. I think, I think in Solon, we have a lot to be proud about, right? We've got, we've got, we've got, you know, Splash Pad, our rec department does a lot for youth sports. There is a lot of civil engagement. I just, I think there's a lot of good things about town. As far as the biggest thing to be proud of, I'm not going to pin it down to just one thing. I think we, I think we have a lot of stuff to be proud of. But the miss would be, yes, probably we need a community center. The other one is falling down, is going to be torn down here pretty soon. That's what I would like to see in the community. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
The biggest hit, Main Street. Friends from all over comment how nice Main Street is, how welcoming Main Street is. And if you can start there and then blossom out, you've got a good thing going. I think the biggest miss right now is probably the community center, recreation slash recreation center. And I'm just going to share this. If elected, I've got some ideas maybe to help get that moving in the right direction. And for those who may or may not know me, I was intimately involved in the new fire station. So, if you have any questions about what's going on down there, you can ask later.
Can we get a pool? Cole Gabriel.
I would love a pool, and I try every single year to be a good shepherd of your taxes. If you in this room and everyone beyond are okay with taxes going up to pay for that thing, we can have a conversation. Till then, let's get the big projects immediately in front of us done, and then revisit that in a couple of years.
Tim Gordon.
No. No, I'm just kidding. Pools are very expensive. The Splash Pad was a great thing for the younger crowds. Yes, it would be amazing to have. As far as the community centers go, when you look at places like Mount Vernon, the Leicester Burris Center up there, Noah doesn't have a pool. It's amazing, but it's also privately funded. A lot of tax dollars did not go into that thing, which, yes, it would be amazing to have a pool someday. My ultimate vision would be an indoor pool that we could share with the school, that could have a diving program and a swimming program and stuff like that. But obviously, that is a whole lot of money that we're trying to find in very scarce ways. So, it'd be something to look at, look forward to in the future, but all we can do is try.
Matt Mackey.
I hope my kids aren't watching, but I would agree. I would support it if it was privately funded. But they are expensive to operate, then you have to staff it, you have to certify lifeguards, and so on and so forth. We've all been to them, we all know. I think we've got bigger issues to take care of first before we go spend money in that direction. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
Pools have been a subject in Solon for as long as time. And I think the best way to look at it, whoever asked that question, if your pockets are really deep, let the city know because they'd be more than happy to let you build it. I just think right now, as it's looked at on a yearly basis, because it does come up, maybe getting it built, you can, but you have to maintain it and then to employ people. And then the question is, is it open seven days a week? How many hours a day is it open? I think a lot of times when governments put buildings up, to get the building built isn't the challenge, it's staffing the building also. I would support a pool if we could figure out a way to fund it and not raise taxes. But I think right now, the majority of people in town, if we put it to a vote, it probably wouldn't pass anyway just because of the cost.
And Lauren. Lauren Whitehead.
Hi. I can't add much more about how unfortunately, this year for Christmas, we're not going to get a pool. But I want to tell folks that if you want to see something happen in the city, you don't have to wait for our permission to bring it up, to talk about it, to advocate for it. If you really want a pool, let's make a pool for Solon organization. Start writing grants, start raising money. I'm happy to talk to you about that. We can do a lot on our side of the table, but you don't have to wait for us, right? And if you, if you want pool, you want Urban Chickens, whatever it is you want, like, I'll talk to you and we can see how we can make it happen. Pool's not going to happen anytime soon, though, unfortunately.
How would you address the lack of a community center or a rec center once the existing structure is demolished? Timeframe, I think.
Once the existing one is demolished, I mean, I do believe that we should have definitely had more insight into what we can do to replace it. The community, a community center would be amazing. Our Parks and Rec Department does an amazing job. Obviously, they're going to need a home to do a lot of things. So, I guess as far as a timeframe standpoint, I don't have an answer for that, but that's all I got.
Matt Mackey.
I would say we need to first probably figure out a location of where it's even feasible to build something like that. And I've thought a little bit about that, because the location that it's in right now is perfect, right? It doesn't require kids from all the schools to craft across Highway One. It's within walking distance of the elementary and the intermediate schools, because that's, they see a huge uptick in usage after school gets out, right? You know, the kids go up there to play for a couple hours until mom and dad get off work. So, I would like to keep it kind of located around there, where we could do that at, I'm sure of right now. But I do think it does need to be a priority and does need to be an issue that the county, the existing council is addressing right now to explore options to get a new one. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
To me, it's a twofold part. The first part is a community center for people to meet, meetings, gatherings, fun and games. Then there's also a rec center part. So, it's twofold. It's going to be missed because it's going to be a blank space. And right now, with, the best way to do it is you're going to have to work with other entities who have space in town for different groups to meet, whether it's the school, our churches, maybe some businesses will open things up. It's not going to be easy. I think the other thing to realize that when we're able to do this, it's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight as far as construction cost. There's a lot of ways to get things going in the right direction, to help it financially. There's no doubt about that. I learned that with the fire station. But it's not going to be easy, and it's going to take time. And I think it's something that everybody wants, but you have to figure out dollars and cents.
Lauren Whitehead.
The new community center is going to be a really fun challenge. Establishing, like I said, the first one in town was a highlight in my early career as a counselor. I think our immediate challenge is going to have to be finding creative solutions to how's our programming, once the center is gone, between the end of the current center and the beginning of the new one, right? So, we're going to have to be agile, adapt. We're talking about different ways to do that. And I think our rec department is up for the challenge. We're going to have to cooperate with each other. I see the community center reflecting who we are as a town, connected and caring and multi-generational. I want it to have, I don't want to be in competition with anybody else. I want that to be dedicated space for our people. So, that's what I'll be pushing for. And as far as financial achievement, we're going to have to pursue grants, partnerships, public input every step of the way, basically anything we can do to raise this barn.
Cole Gabriel.
If the time of construction between the existing community center and the new community center will end up being too long, we will advocate and pursue any partnerships with local entities to keep the existing programs running in whatever form we have to. If we have to leave space, if we have to open new space, if we have to consider alternative construction, like expanding the existing library to serve as a de facto community center, I am open to all of those options. Like I said, we will pursue every possible avenue to raise money and minimize time and cost in construction to get this moving forward.
How about a decent place for a food pantry? Matt Mackey.
Yeah. Sounds good. There seems to be, I'll tell you what, since we're big fans of shoving stuff in the library, right? Just kidding. There's a lot of empty space most days up at City Hall that I think we could put it in. But really, the, all jokes aside, yes, absolutely, we can, we can find a place for it where that is. I don't, I can't say right now because that honestly is a question that I've never asked myself. But, yes, absolutely, I'm in favor for it. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
I think the most important thing with a food pantry, firstly, is to talk to the people that are working in it, see what they think is needed. I've been involved in the past few mays with, with our firefighter's breakfast and helping stock that over the summertime. It is a needed entity in town. There's no doubt about it. But trying to find the right place would be interesting. Cost, obviously, number one. And then accessibility. It's got to be easy for people to get to, to see, to know when you're there. But my first thing on that would be visit with the people who are working it right now and see what's important to them to make what they're doing easier, and then make it easier for the people who are going to use it.
Lauren Whitehouse.
Lauren Whitehead. I agree with everybody. Obviously, this is a very important service that our community needs, and I'm grateful for the folks who staff it. They put their heart into that work. I believe we've got to incorporate a food pantry space into any new community center. It must be accessible. It must be open when people could get to it, and it should have good food for our folks. So, I'm in support of anything we can do to support that, I will be in favor of.
Cole Gabriel.
Yes, and absolutely. I have been meeting with the Solon Food Pantry, as well as the senior support groups for the last couple of months, on finding ways to better improve coordination and cooperation. I can't go into details, but this is a current topic with the existing council and the city administration to provide either a form of assistance to help them get a better location.
Tim Gordon.
I agree with everybody on the panel so far, shockingly. It's, yeah, food pantry, the one that's here has done a fantastic job. Obviously, an upgrade would be nice. We're not going to hit something like North Liberty just did, you know, putting a little mini fairway in. But something in a community center with access from families mini fairway in. But something in a community center with access from families to seniors to everybody else would be fantastic.
There have been a number of reports, such as the Al Wells Hotel Project and the Jordan Creek Church, that it is difficult to work with the city. What do you think the appropriate relationship should be between the city and residents? And how would you go about fixing the reported issues? Greg Morris.
I'm not sure what the issues are, and I don't want to comment on that as far as what's right and wrong. I think the most important thing when it comes to issues, if people are concerned, is make sure they get to the council meeting with their concerns so the entire council hears the issue. And as the council, you have to do your best to answer the questions one appropriately. And if it's a deal where you have to deal with your city attorney to make sure you're answering it right and within the law, you do that. To read about those issues is disheartening in Solon, I'll be very honest with you, but I'm not in a spot to comment on what's right and wrong because I'm not really sure what the right and wrongs are. Thank you.
Lauren Whitehead.
Thank you so much. This is not the first time I've heard this kind of communication from residents, so it doesn't come as a big surprise. And I think communication between a city and its folks is always something that has to evolve. I'm very open to feedback, and I try to make myself as accessible as possible to my residents. I have my phone number up on the website, my email address, and I will call you back. I think that's my job. I think it's the resident or the counselor's job to listen with respect. And the city should operate in that way as well. So what I would do to my part is continue to respond respectfully, honestly, make sure everybody understands the why behind my decisions. And if I can't answer a question, get somebody who, you know, connect people to the person who can. And I will do everything I can over the next four years to enhance any accountability, transparency. Come to me, talk to me, and we'll make it work.
Cole Gabriel.
I would echo all sentiments on transparency and accountability. So if you ever have any questions or concerns about what's going on in the city and the best way to approach it, immediately reach out to me. I will get back to you as soon as I can and go from there. As far as specific issues we have with entities, I would say the best way to approach that is even if you can't agree with them in the moment, if they have an issue or if there is a point to the conversation, even if you can't agree with them in that particular moment or on that particular issue, if interaction between city councils or the city administration isn't going smoothly, taking that to heart, talking with city administration, talking with your fellow counselors, and coming back and trying to come up with a plan to make things more efficient and effective and at least more civil, if nothing else.
Tim Gordon.
Boy, to me, this is like a who's-on-first kind of situation. Without knowing all the details, I don't think, I really don't see how it could be difficult to work with the city council, you know, with full communication. It should be something, transparency is the difficulty there because you want to also maintain privacy for who was involved. So we're not taking sides by any means, but knowledge is the key out there for whoever's trying to get in, you know, get the city council to do something for them. I guess I don't know, yeah, I'm not in a place to answer the questions because I don't know the details between the church or the Al Wells things outside of what I've seen on social media, and we're not going to go there.
Matt. Mackey.
Difficult to work with is kind of a very widespread ambiguous term in my mind. Is it difficult to work with, difficult to talk to, we just didn't like the agreement of the terms? What is the exact problem? I don't know. But I think the base root of it all, it's probably is a communication error or something's not jiving, right? So people's skills 101, find out what each other's interests are. And at the end of the day, it still does have to make sense for Solon if we're conceding or agreeing to. So it really should benefit and be in the best interest of both parties. But I don't know enough about the content, about what has been said, what has been done, or what can be done. But I think it needs to, you know, probably just cool down a little bit and come back to the table and talk civilly. What I find kind of wildly weird about sitting here today is we have two sitting Solon council members. And I, for the lack of, I didn't hear an answer, and they should be engaged in those conversations already. Thank you.
What is your agenda or plan for Solon over the next five years? Lauren Whitehead.
Okay. My top priority right now is figuring out the short-term plan for recreation and the new community center. We got to figure that out ASAP. I really, we have to launch that wastewater treatment plant successfully. We've got to get that off the ground. And I would love to be a part of shepherding that into starting. It's not going to be done, but it will get started. And a big goal of mine is I'd really like to build the bench in Solon. I'd like to work with young people, with people interested in leadership, so that when I move on, when any of us move on, there are new, engaged, informed people ready to step in and contribute meaningfully to our community. I think that's a really important part of my job, my role as a leader in this community.
Cole Gabriel.
I believe that over the next five years, the most important items for Solon, two of them are going to be infrastructure, completing the water treatment plant and getting a new community center built. Something else that I want to make sure that we accomplish is I would like the city to set up a senior liaison to meet with the senior Solon support groups to improve coordination and communication because it's a growing demographic in Solon. And I think getting resources to them quicker and hearing their concerns in a more timely manner would be important going forward. Managing strategic growth between the water issues, density, available housing and housing prices, I think shepherding growth over the next five years is going to be very vital for Solon's future. So approaching that with care and consideration is going to be vital.
Tim Gordon.
I believe the way things are going right now, the top priority for me would probably be the relationship between the public and the city. I think that that needs to be addressed, looked at, finished. Yes, we need a community center, but we all got to get along. And it's one of those things that when I walk down the street, I want to see more smiles and more handshakes. And that's kind of the biggest thing for me.
Matt. Mackey.
Yeah, as far as an agenda would go, community center, it's been talked about, that would be a big one. But also, I've had the opportunity, I've lived in three sides of this town. I live out on the south side now, but I've lived right across from the old fire station. I've lived on the other side of Main Street. So one thing that hasn't been talked about here tonight is our, kind of our internal roads and our drainage systems. There are a lot of roads that do not have curbs that, you know, and that used to happen at my old house where, you know, gravel would get washed into a driveway. So I would like to see some more internal Solon infrastructure projects and go in kind of block by block and bringing those up to speed before we go support a new development in porn and their new roads and new drainage systems. So that's kind of where I would start. There's a number of things that all sound great up here today, but I do not have the inside knowledge to say, yep, we're going to make that happen until I actually get a look at the books and see what we're dealing with. So in full transparency, I'm telling you, there's a lot of great stuff I'd like to do, but until I know all the details, I'm not going to promise you something I can't deliver. Thank you.
Greg Morris.
I think the most important thing to me the next five years is to be a good listener, to listen to what people have to say and what is important to them. And if we can take that to the council and make things better in town, that would be number one to me. The water treatment plan is well on its way. It's going to be expensive. If you haven't figured that out, it's going to be. But we don't have a choice. Where we're at right now and what we're doing is very old and it's not worth fixing. The community center slash rec center, I think, would be very important for probably not only Solon but surrounding. And I think that can be incorporated and helped and worked on. And then in the end, I agree with Matt. I like the curb and gutter program. And people from outside Solon who I know who come into town notice it. So that's been an important part. As maybe goofy as it sounds, it has helped things, and people do pay attention to that. So I would support that.
What is one issue we have not discussed this evening that you think is important for Solon? Matt. Mackey.
Has not been discussed. I think an issue, let me think about it. No, we haven't really talked about, a whole lot about our Parks and Recs program. I would like to, I'd like to expand upon that, talk to those folks, find out what more they need, kind of get some updated equipment. You know, it's getting a lot better down at SNRA, but I remember, you know, in kind of years past, you know, we couldn't find anybody to even drag the fields, or it seemed like the grass couldn't get mowed. And that's not a jab at our wonderful Public Works folks. They have a big job and, with limited resources. But I would like to kind of investigate, expand upon, or find out how to build that up so that way it can more efficiently serve Solon families.
Greg Morris.
The thing that I don't think has been discussed about, but I've got a pretty good understanding about is our city employees. It is incredibly expensive when someone decides to leave their job, to bring someone new in, to hire them and train them. What I would like to do if elected is I'd like to meet individually with each employee, find out what they like about their job, maybe what we can do to help their job, and to keep them here. If they like Solon, let's keep them here. It only allows our city to run more efficiently, and it doesn't matter who it is, if it's a full-timer or a part-timer. It really, in my mind, it doesn't matter. I operated that way at my previous job, and it helped me grow and learn like you would not believe. So if we can keep our people here and keep them doing things the way they like to do them, and it's all good, I think that's important because they start leaving, and we got to start hiring people. It costs us more money than not. Thank you.
Lauren Whitehead.
You guys brought up so many good things. So one topic that I really thought would be great to bring up tonight to talk about is the fact that what I feel like we need to do, what a challenge that our current council has and the next council will have, is stepping up as advocates for Solon in the region and at the state level. We are in a very unique, amazing breaking point, almost. We're growing so fast. We have amenities we want to provide. This whole area around us is going to increasingly rely on Solon. And I think we all need, any leader in this community should be stepping up and talking to and collaborating with other government leaders to make sure that Solon is being heard and that Solon is getting resources that we deserve and need to continue to grow, thrive, and serve our people and the communities that continually rely on us.
Cole Gabriel.
Well, for a topic that hasn't been mentioned already, supporting and expanding Main Street. If you compare Main Street to 20 years ago, it's night and day. There's been explosive growth and a lot of stability going there, but I want to make sure that that stays healthy and keeps going. We've all noticed that certain stores down on Main Street have closed over the years, and I want to make sure that the city is a good partner in making sure that new businesses come in, existing businesses can thrive, and that there are opportunities for local employment for Solonites. I grew up in Des Moines, and there were ample opportunities from the age of 14 to 18 to have employment and have that first job. I want to make sure that children going up in Solon have that job going, have that same opportunity going forward. I currently exist on the Building and Growth Committee. I would like to see the latest downtown expansion come to fruition within the next year, get those new, get existing properties sold, get businesses in them, get developments done, and then talk with all the business leaders and see what we can do to help them go for that next step forward.
Tim Gordon.
I want to trade seats with Cole, so I'm not echoing him. Biggest thing is business. Whether it's drawing in new business or how can we help the ones that are currently here thrive, I mean, through TIF funds, through anything else. We've got some great businesses in town. Some have left because of rents and things like, I mean, it's just, once again, that's not just the housing crisis, it's everywhere. It's one of those things that we need to just look at, focus on. The downtown project definitely needs updated to see how we're going to move forward with that. It's been a long time coming. It's kind of fun to look back at what they thought the future would look like, which it's not too far off, but yeah, just business support.
What are your plans to bring in new businesses to Solon, such as a dollar store or an additional grocery store option? Greg Morris.
The dollar store has been addressed by the council already, and it has been rejected. I know several people in the grocery business who have thought about coming to Solon but do not want to be in competition with our current grocery store. So I think those two entities would be really hard to deal with. And I think the one thing the council has dealt with before is sometimes people want to come in and establish business, but they expect a lot of things to be given to them. And that's okay, but what one has to remember, what you do for one, you got to do for the other. So I do compliment the council on that, to be very careful about movement forward. I think that's important. Would it be nice to have more business? Absolutely. My dad ran a business downtown Main Street for 40 years. And much like what Tim said, that the storefronts that are open right now, it'd be nice to fill them all and expand Main Street. I think that'd be great. The one thing that we all have to remember, if we do that, if council invests in it, we find the right, I got to stop. I'll stop.
Lauren Whitehead.
Great question. So I think the council has, we love bringing businesses to Solon, and I think we do our best to cooperate and attract and retain businesses on Main Street. It's hard to incentivize a specific business. I've had teenagers ask me, can we get a pin chair? I was like, I really wish we could. But it's, I mean, it's consumer demand, right? We can't just make decisions for businesses that Solon is the right home for them. But we certainly can be a place where they can approach city council, can know that we will work together with them to make their project come to fruition. And we will consider every business proposition very carefully to make sure it's the right fit for this community. I definitely, you know, a dollar store, something like that, where are we going to put it? How much parking are we going to need? Where will it fit in? All of those are important questions that we'll have to ask when we talk about growing businesses.
Cole Gabriel.
Yeah, I think it's important to make sure that if a business is coming in, it's a good fit for Solon, and it's not necessarily creating unnecessary competition for existing businesses. Sam's has been a staple of Solon for a long period of time. If a local grocery store were looking to come in, I would just want to make sure that they have appropriate business model, that they're invested in Solon in the long term and not just the short term, because a lot of the businesses in the community are also advocates in this community. They're donators in this community. And I just want to make sure that any businesses that come in have that same mentality. And just making sure that the city council is making intelligent decisions so we're not cannibalizing existing businesses as we invite others in.
Tim Gordon.
I think that we've already established that Solon's too bougie for a dollar store. By not just saying that, Solon's more of a small boutique community to me. And that's one thing, yes, it'd be nice to see businesses like that come in. However, when you look at the infrastructure of Solon, we really don't have that industrial look. It's something, where would we put that? I honestly have no idea where something like that could go in this town. Moving other businesses in here, though, in, I mean, Main Street's key. And like everybody else has said, support the local guy first. Sam, he's got everything from discount t-shirts to fireworks. So, yeah.
Matt Mackey.
I think it's a, it's a mix. It's a, you know, really, you're not, most of it's probably private enterprise, right? You know, that that business has to make that make sense and be financially feasible and profitable for them to exist in a certain space or not. And obviously, purchase the property, rent, lease. What the city would be doing is essentially controlling permits and making sure it's zoned properly. I would agree with just about everybody up here. I think, I would tend to support, I would want to see more small business in Solon, in the Main Street area. You know, if it's something like a Dollar General, there's one right down the road in Lisbon or Family Dollar or whatever it is. You can go eight miles and it's right there. I would agree with Tim. Solon has a certain feel and a certain look, and I don't think it would fit here that well. Thank you.
Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. Lauren Whitehead, your closing statement.
First of all, this has been so fun. I care so much about our community, and spending an hour talking about our future is a treat. So thank you. Obviously, we have some really big choices ahead. Our next council will make major decisions that shape our city for decades. So how do we decide who leads? I want you to think about every candidate and what we each bring to the table. A good council balances experience, perspective, and advocacy, so every decision reflects the needs of our whole community. So here's what I bring to the table. First, experience. With Steve Duncan stepping down, I'll be the senior-most member of the council. I've helped guide near- I've helped guide nearly every major project of the past eight years and that knowledge ensures consistency and accountability moving forward. Advocacy. I listen, I follow up, I don't stop at, that's just how it is. If something needs attention, I will bring it forward. I have perspective. I represent voices that aren't always at the center of the conversation as a renter, a single mom, and a West Side resident. This lived experience makes our council stronger. And most of all, I offer genuine care. If you reach out, you will hear back and you'll be treated with respect. So ask yourself, when you have a question or concern, who you want on the other end of the line? You want someone who listens, who follows through, and who advocates for you, and that's the kind of leadership that I offer. So thank you for the opportunity to serve and for believing in Solon's future. I'll be outside the library after the forum to talk about anything else you would like.
Greg Morris, your closing statement.
Thank you. First of all, thanks everybody for being here. This has been fun. I've enjoyed it. One of the things that I'd really like to do if elected over the course of time is yearly bring in 10 property owners and also 10 business owners and find out what's going on in their minds to make our community better. I think that'll help with that key word transparency. It being open, choose people, we, in the four years if elected, I would choose different people every year. I think that'd be a lot of fun. I did that at my old job with some people and it helped me grow and learn and I think it helped them grow and learn too. I think it'd bring a greater understanding to what's going on in our community. It'd also give me the chance to understand maybe something that you're a little blind to or you don't understand. It may give somebody an opportunity one-on-one to share an experience that they don't wanna do within a meeting or a group and that's fine. That's what it's all about. The other thing is, is that the business thing keeps coming up and coming up and coming up and we have to try and attract folks that wanna be here. I think that's highly important. It'll make our community stronger, make our community better, but it'll also maybe save us trips out of town. Time is valuable to all of us. As I said in my opening statement, that's one of the reasons why I decided to run now because I do have time. I think one of the things, experience-wise, I've been involved in a lot of different committees in our community. I have a pretty good understanding of demographics of people from all walks of life. That has helped me grow and learn as a person and I think I can help bring that to the council, help the council grow and learn too and understand what's going on in town. Thank you.
Matt Mackey.
Yeah, my parents always told me growing up that if you didn't vote and you didn't get involved, you really didn't get a complaint about anything. So, that being said, that's why I'm here. That's what sparked my interest. You know, experience on a city council or experience in government doesn't necessarily mean it's a good experience, right? But there are some things, you know, that have happened in recent events that I've kind of paid attention to that I don't think that the current council has benefited Solon or had Solon first as a priority. So that kind of sparked my call to action here. In terms of an agenda, I wanna keep Solon, Solon. I have no desire to see Solon become the size of North Liberty. I don't want the headaches, working in small towns as a law enforcement officer throughout the years, that comes with that. Solon is a very quiet town. We don't have really a crime problem here. I wanna keep it that way. I want my kids to be able to ride their bikes around this town and I don't have a worry in the world except for maybe crossing Highway 1 safely. But I'm here to serve you. So if there is an issue that you are passionate about that concerns you or doesn't, or you just wanna generally talk about, we can't do anything unless you engage with us. I don't know what you're thinking, I don't know what he's thinking, you know, unless you tell me about it. And that's really what I want to tell you what I'll do is, is I'm up here to represent you, not necessarily myself, all of you. So that being said, I encourage you, thank you for coming out tonight. I encourage everybody who's watching, make sure you get out and vote and advocate for yourself. And just like everybody else, I will be available and around here if you wanna talk to me after a day's event, but thank you.
Tim Gordon.
When I was in sixth grade, I promised pot machines in every classroom and that's how I got elected. I don't know what I can do right now to guarantee that. But what I will say is that I will be a candidate that rolls my sleeves up, goes to work, and looks out for the best of Solon. I wanna be a liaison for the community. Biggest thing there is I will be at meetings. I mean, you can go online, you can look at attendance. I don't know how you can be a voice for the people if you're not present at a meeting. You guys can all see that as public record. But yeah, the biggest thing for me is just talking with people, talking with you. The best decisions for Solon will not come from behind a desk, they're gonna come from conversations with people like you that really care about where we live and how we wanna see it grow. So this isn't a make Solon small again thing, it's a make Solon feel small again. And that's all I have. I hope I earned your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Cole Gabriel.
I wanna take just a moment to respond to Matt. Several topics were brought up that I can't quickly or easily answer without context that takes longer than one minute. If any of you have any questions after the meeting, come and approach to me and anything that is confidential, I will gladly go over with you. Beyond that, I just wanna say, a desire to serve four years ago is what made me do a riding campaign and the people of Solon gave me their trust and elected me to serve them and it was an honor and a distinction. Why it has been a pleasure to serve is because of everyone in this room, everyone in the community, my fellow councillors, members who have engaged me sometimes in a frustrated manner. The reason it has been a pleasure to serve is because this community is a great place. I love and value Solon and I take every decision that I have made as a councillor incredibly seriously because every decision I make is the decision that my children are gonna have to live with. I love Solon and if you ever are frustrated or ever have any questions or concerns, just know that you can contact me. As far as plans for the future, I feel like we've gone over that. Important infrastructure decisions are coming up, maintaining that sense of community that I walked into but has existed much longer than me. I value that and I value our continued growth and stability moving forward. And something I wanna say is I love the fact that we have five people at this table that care enough about Solon to want to engage in and the fact that regardless of how November 4th turns out, people who love and care about Solon will be elected to represent it. So I wanna take a moment to thank everyone at the table for engaging in this and if there are any questions or concerns, please come to me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you for our candidates, to the Solon Economist and to the Solon Public Library for providing the venue for tonight's forum. Thank you to Michael Clark for technical assistance in recording the forum. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Thank you, good night.